I would like to call the Prince William County School Board to meeting in order. A motion is in order for the approval of the closed session agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Jessie.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Yes, I second.
Ms. Ralston seconds. Discussion? No discussion? Vote.
Can we get rid of that feedback back there? Do I need to refresh or something?
No. Here we go.
Okay, got it.
Got it.
Moving on to the motion enter closed session. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Jessie.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A, 1 and 8. Two, to discuss and consult with legal counsel regarding requests for religious exemption pertaining to specific students under Codes 2.2-3711A, 2 and 8. Three, to discuss the division counsel and staff and receive legal advice regarding specific legal services under Virginia Codes 2.2-3711, 1 and 8. Four, to discuss with the, with or receive information from division counsel and the superintendent regarding legal services under Virginia Codes 2 point, code, Virginia Code 2.2-37118. Five, to receive information and consult with the division counsel and staff regarding FOIA requests and disclosure of information related to specific employees under Virginia Codes 2.2-3711A, 1 and 8. Six, to discuss with the division counsel and staff regarding anticipated litigation and specific legal issues under Virginia Codes 2.2-3711A, 7 and 8. Seven, to discuss information and legal advice regarding a specific student under Virginia Codes 2.2-3711A, 2, 4, and 8. And eight, to discuss with division counsel and legal, the staff, legal issues revolve, involving specific school employees requiring advice of counsel under Virginia Codes 2.2-3711A, 1 and 8.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Ms. Ralston seconds. Discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent. Trenneman, Williams. Motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return to open session in approximately one hour. The Prince William County School Board is now returning to open session from closed session. We do not have any closed session action agenda items, correct, Mary?
Correct.
Okay. We'll move on next to adoption of a, of closed session consent agenda. Moving on to the adoption of closed sessions consent agenda. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Jessie.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Discussion? Please vote. Moving on to closed session certification. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Jessie.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Discussion? Please vote. Moving on to closed session certification. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Jessie.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of September 9, 2018 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by school.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams.
Second.
Discussion? Please vote. Next, we're going to move on to the presentation of positively Prince William County Schools. The school year, we are kicking off the business of our meetings with a response to community requests to hear more about the good things that Prince William County Public Schools are accomplishing. There's plenty of information out there at the school and community level, but it's not surprising that can't, it can get lost, especially in the challenges and details that the board deals with at these meetings. So we are working with the schools and our communications team to spotlight a few of the good news items at these meetings and elsewhere with the term positively Prince William County Schools. It is intended to focus on how we're preparing our students academically and socially for success in college and careers. Tonight's example of positive Prince William County Schools comes from the Woodbridge District. So Ms. Lori Williams will introduce her, our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may have heard that Kilby Elementary School is a recipient of a $200,000 21st Century Community Learning Center grant. This isn't the first year Kilby has earned the grant. They were awarded more than $500,000 back in 2015, and they have experienced academic gains as a result. It is my pleasure to introduce Karen Najum, Principal of Kilby Elementary School, to tell us a little bit more about their success. Ms. Najum? And did I say that right?
Yes. Good job.
Thank you.
So Kilby Elementary was awarded a three-year grant totaling $592,443 in August 2015 by the Virginia Department of Education. Kilby's 21st Century Community Learning Center, the Learning Safari, was a federally funded program designed to improve student outcomes in reading and math and provide opportunities for family engagement. Since being awarded in August 2015, we have served 150 students per year in kindergarten through grade five, four days a week for two and a half hours after school. Each student received a healthy snack, academic instruction, and support in reading and math, as well as enrichment in the areas of technology, language, the arts, and fitness with our partner and co-applicant Alphabetz. Families were provided more than 200 hours of family engagement programming over the course of three years, took 18 family field trips through the DC area, and the Learning Safari has provided a world-class education after the school day ends and is positively PWCS. At this time, I would like to turn the presentation over to an individual who dreamed this program and then made it a reality for our school community. Sarah Palmetello has seen the Learning Safari from application to implementation for the past three years. After the three years were completed, Sarah reapplied, making adjustments, and secured funding for yet another 21st Century Community Learning Center. And Kilby is the sole elementary school in Prince William County that was awarded funding. So here's Sarah.
Thank you, Ms. Najum. From 2015 through the summer, the Learning Safari served more than 250 students in total, with most students participating in the program for all three years. Students are admitted to the program primarily based upon academic need in reading, math, or both subject areas. The positive outcomes achieved by the Learning Safari were made possible by a holistic approach to after-school learning that encompassed academics, enrichment, and family engagement. Each day, students began their after-school hours with an hour of academic instruction provided by our highly qualified teachers. Our wonderful staff created engaging learning opportunities that provided students with remediation, review, and pre-teaching to support their academic success in reading and math. Students had daily opportunities to work collaboratively with their peers, as well as opportunities to work in small groups. With class sizes significantly lower than the school day, students were able to receive targeted assistance that maximized their learning. One of the most exciting and unique components of our program was providing students with engaging enrichment opportunities that supported their academic learning. Directly following our academic instructional hour, students transitioned to learning zones with our partner and co-applicant Alphabetz. Students were provided with one and a half hours of daily enrichment in four key areas: technology, language, the arts, and fitness. During the course of a week, Learning Safari students might have learned how to sign the Pledge of Allegiance, the history and style of pointillism in art, how to code a robot through a maze, and practice their backhand in tennis. Students were able to develop new interests, hone existing skills, and discover strengths that they never knew they had. Supporting families and supporting students is one of the most important aspects of our commitment to providing a world-class education. Each year, the Learning Safari provided 16 family engagement events to set our families on the course to success. The family engagement events ranged from classes to assist emerging bilingual family members in learning English, to appropriate reading strategies and reading behaviors at home, to interactive family STEM nights. One of the most successful family engagement events each year was our SOL night, in which students led conferences with their families to discuss, discuss their strengths, weaknesses, and areas for improvement leading up to spring SOL testing. Families left with a plan, not only for the school day, but with strategies and materials to help their student at home. Another successful series of events this past year were family work sessions leading up to Kilby's Science Fair. Families learned about the scientific method, how to do research, and guided opportunities to work collaboratively with their students. We had a phenomenal turnout at our first science fair in over 10 years, with students creating such amazing product, projects as the hydraulic arm you can see. Our families are our community's greatest asset, and engaging them in the academic process has been one of the pillars of our program. In line with our commitment to engaging families with the academic process, the Learning Safari utilized Saturday family field trips as a means of modeling the learning that can take place outside of the school walls, largely for free in the DC metro area. We took six family field trips per year to locations such as the Natural History Museum, National Museum of American History, and the zoo. On Saturday field trips, families were provided with guidance and links to academic learning to support their visit to the museum. At the Natural History Museum, for example, families went on a scavenger hunt in English and in Spanish, then met SOL objectives in their student's grade level. Families were provided with the answer key and hints, as well as discussion questions, to help guide them on their journeys. These trips were the highlight of my job as site coordinator, as I often got to witness families experiencing firsts: their first time standing on the mall, their first time seeing a painting by Monet, or their first time seeing dinosaur fossils. I also have the privilege of watching families learn together, with students eagerly engaging their family with a fact they learn or something they connected from the school day. These trips not only bolstered academics, but provided opportunities to strengthen the relationships within our school community. I often brought my own family along, and that's actually my son touching the geode up there with some of our families from school. These core areas, academics, enrichment, and family engagement, work in unison to create a culture of improvement and success, leading to these outcomes. Students that attended after-school on average had 96.5% regular school day attendance, exceeding that of their peers that were not enrolled in the program. School day attendance is an indicator for academic success and one that we monitored very closely within our program. Overall, across the three years of the program and among all grade levels, we saw an average increase of almost 7% in reading grades and an average gain of 17 points on the reading SOL from third to fourth grade and fourth to fifth grade. In math, we saw nearly 9% increase in grades and an average gain of 15 points on the math SOL. Not only did these gains serve to increase the academic success of students, but a boost to their confidence and attitude towards their education. Two-thirds of students in grades three through five self-identified as feeling better equipped for the school day by attending after-school, supported by homeroom teachers, reporting three-quarters of students significantly improving their class participation and performance. I'm proud to introduce you to one of the families that participated in the Learning Safari all three years, Kalen, now a sixth grader at Fred Lynn Middle School, and Ashley, a proud Kilby Tiger in the fifth grade. Come on up, Grace.
Hi, I'm Kalen. I graduated from Kilby last year, and now I'm attending Fred Lynn Middle School. My favorite part of the after-school program was all the field trips I got to go with my family. The after-school program helped me with all my grades.
Hi, my name is Ashley Omaya. Hi, my name is Ashley Omaya. I'm a fifth grader this year at Kilby. My favorite part of after-school program was the learning, because it helped me with my SOLs.
On August 10th of this year, Kilby was awarded a new 21st CCLC program in the amount of $200,000 per year. We're thrilled to be starting Tiger 21 next Monday and look forward to providing our school community with another three years of academic instruction, enrichment, and family engagement after the school day has ended. Kilby is proud to continue to provide a world-class education after the school day ends, championing our students and their families in a way that is positively PWCS. Thank you.
Lori Williams?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you, Sarah, for continuing this program and taking the time and effort to make a difference for our Kilby families. And also, I didn't get a chance to come over to the Summer Academy, but I would love to attend a Saturday field trip or something in the afternoon. Please reach out and send me an invite. I'd be happy to attend. Thank you so much for all of the hard work you do and backdoor making to our community.
Congratulations. Thank you for a nice presentation, and I hope you can continue to do this and share your great practices with our other schools in the county. Thank you so much. I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. First, we'd like to do the invocation. I'd like to invite Pastor Dr. Keith Savage of the First Baptist Church of Manassas to please come to the podium and offer our invocation. It's an honor to have you here tonight, sir. Thank you.
It is an honor to be here. Wonderful news for what our children are doing. To the chair, to the vice chair, to all of the district board members, personnel, and all who are gathered here this evening, good evening to you. Let us pray. Almighty God, we invite your holy presence and direction for tonight's Prince William County School Board meeting. We are best when we avoid the advice of the wicked, the path that leads to sin, or place ourselves in positions to become pessimist. Hear this prayer and usher in these school board leaders and guests and community members to rise to greater levels of love for our students, teachers, administrators, neighbors, community, and county. Tonight, let them think and communicate a common theme of priority, hope and remedy under the banner of progress for every child in our classrooms and schools. Let them communicate a common theme of expressed appreciation and real support for every teacher and administrator engaged in the call of educating the least, the brightest, the needy, and the well-equipped. Need those who will offer advice and make decisions here to do so for the betterment of all in our educational school system. Let their words and deeds exemplify and give hope for the present, a hope rooted in the heritage of human dignity for which we are indebted to live for the future. If you will grant this, we will witness a dawning of renewed learning, proposed and passed, that will refuse to reflect a war of separation, but a showcase of common welfare of caring. Let all voices that speak tonight echo the recognition of one another as neighbor and not villain. Let all votes that are cast tonight reverberate the priority that every single child, every single teacher, regardless of location or influence, be without limit encouraged and equipped to soar. Forbid us to be divided in profitless partisanship, but guided anew by the moral compass of a commonwealth and common welfare. Help us to care as much for the psychological and mental well-being of all in our care as we do for the physical security of our properties and premises. And lastly, remind us anew of those words of wisdom. An educational system isn't worth a great deal if it teaches young people how to make a living, but doesn't teach them how to make a life. I offer this prayer to you, Almighty God. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. Next, we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance. If we have any students here who would like to come to the podium and lead us in the pledge? Okay. Do we have anybody? Come to the podium, please, and introduce yourself, and then tell us what school you're at, and lead us in the pledge, please.
I'm Jacob Mauer from Benton Middle School. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Mauer. Moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Motion, or discussion? Please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Satterwhite?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to recognize Custodial Services Employee Appreciation Week. I know when we go into our schools for back-to-school nights and at the very beginning of the school year, our schools look absolutely incredible, and it's amazing how our custodians can make an older school look brand-new. And I just want to say thank you, and we definitely want to recognize our school custodians the remarkable job they do making our schools look so good, not only for the beginning of the school year, but each and every day. So the Custodial Services Appreciation Week is going to be coming up, I believe, in October, but don't miss an opportunity tomorrow, anytime in the future, to please thank your custodians. Thank them every day for what they do for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. That, so we'll move on to the adoption of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve... Why is that the same?
Oh, finish, please, finish voting on the approval of the agenda. Sorry.
It's okay. I voted to.
Yeah, no, she thought it was a consent agenda. It's fine. It's okay. You want to, I think you can start reading. Are you going to read it, Deb? Are we good? Adoption, so we'll move on.
The vote is eight yes, Janina. Miss motion passed.
Excellent, thank you. So we're moving on to the, the adoption of the consent agenda. A motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Any discussion? Ms. Williams.
I too would like to echo and this, Ms. Satterwhite's comments about school custodian and so, excuse me, custodian services appreciate, employee appreciation week. I tried to remember to do this every year because I feel like it's very important. They are the backbone of what keeps us running. And I also wanted to, just because personal, I'm part Italian, so I also wanted to recognize National Italian Heritage, Italian-American Heritage Month for myself, and just to honor Milk, because that was usually his thing that I got a kick out of, so, thank you.
So as you tally that up, Debbie, we'll move on to the student representative. During this time on the agenda, the student representative and alternates will speak and have an opportunity to introduce themselves and share their interests. We'll start with our student representative, Sasan Faraj of the Patriot High School. Please.
All right, thank you. Can everyone hear me? All right, cool. Good evening, everyone. As I said during the last board meeting, I plan on connecting to the schools via their student government organizations or leadership classes. Recently, I had the pleasure of visiting Osborne Park High School's SCA, and I heard from their student council representatives and leadership class students. We went over some of their overarching concerns and suggestions, so I'll spend the majority of my time going over some of these concerns. First, what stuck out to me the most was the students thought that their educational environment was not a welcoming environment the second they stood, stepped foot into school. This is troublesome, because in order for students to learn, they must feel comfortable at a school, and by creating a more lively and energetic atmosphere, going to school can stop being a chore and turn into a highlight of a student's day. One thing that students suggested was more face-to-face interactions with their administration. I bring this to the board's attention, because this is not an isolated issue. In fact, having more student administration interactions was an idea talked about by the previous student representative. So doing this, students can feel more welcome in their school and more connected to their school. And the board's encouragement for school administrative teams to connect with their students would allow students to understand that they are valued and that Prince William County does care about their education. Secondly, although it's not budget season, students voiced their concerns about the allocation of funds. Now, before I get into this, the students acknowledged that not every issue is a predominant issue, and that there's only a set amount of money to spend looking in the future. However, they also wanted to assure that they looked after future generations of students. Many of these student leaders voiced their concerns about a lack of variety for vegetarian lunch options. This is a concern worth looking into, because students throughout Prince William County Schools go through lunch without the luxury of changing what their lunch is every day. And one of the bigger, bigger concerns was about renovations. For instance, having newer desks where students can fit most of their papers for any given class, or more desks that are the new type, which students can write on with a dry erase marker, was discussed. Now, they did understand that this would cost a tremendous amount of money, but it is not something to do right away. And since we are aware of this current concern, we can address it in bits and pieces. Now, as a student that goes to a school where these newer type desks are the majority of our desks and not vice versa, I can say that these desks do help make our education more interactive and efficient. These are important for doing quick practice problems or math, in math, or writing down overarching ideas we learned in history. That way, we can go back and review. It makes education all the more enjoyable and adds on to this welcoming environment. And during the last board meeting, I mentioned the idea of posters that would be spread around the high schools, and those posters would have a QR code that would take students to an online survey. Those posters have been recently distributed, and schools are now putting them up. Once students begin to respond, I'll update the board as to what the students are thinking. Moreover, I have planned visits coming up with Battlefield High School and Potomac, Potomac Senior High School, as well as Garfield High School. And for the other high schools, I plan to connect with them shortly. As always, students can reach me at my email. I'll spell it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Faraj. Do we have our alternates here tonight? No. Okay, we'll move on to citizen comments on the agenda and non-agenda items. It looks like we have four people that have signed up. Everyone that signed up in, oh, look, everyone's going to speak. If we still are within our 30-minute window, we will go forward. The remaining speakers at the door, I will call the first 10 names and ask you to have a seat in the front row. That will be Jennifer Kala, Kate Olsen Flynn, Jennifer Gilli, and Riley O'Casey. You'll have three minutes to speak, and the clerk will keep the time. The lights on the monitor will indicate your progress. The yellow lights will signify that you should sum up your position. Red indicates your time is up and you should stop. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you'll be asked to step aside. Please give your name and address for the record when you approach the podium. Our first speaker is Jennifer Kala.
Jennifer Kala?
Kala, sorry.
Thirty, Kala, that's right. 3895 Triad Court in Woodbridge. I am representing the elementary school students and parents of Triad Court in Woodbridge. Our children attend Springwoods Elementary School. We ask that our elementary school bus stop be moved back onto Triad Court. The recent bus stop move to the intersection at Springwoods Drive has put 13 school children at high risk for getting hit by cars. This figure does not account for younger siblings or their parents. The bus stop is on a southbound decline that starts with a curve. This section of road is notorious for its disregard of pedestrians. This section of road is well-known for drivers greatly exceeding the speed limit, which is 35 miles per hour. Cars have been recorded at speeds of 45-plus miles per hour. These conditions create reduced visibility for both pedestrians and drivers. There is at least a 20-foot gap between the curb and where the bus stops, creating an unsafe critical path for children to cross to get onto the bus. There is no safe waiting area to accommodate the number of students, as well as parents and younger siblings, at this stop. The number of students is only expected to increase over the next few years based on existing children on Triad Court. During bad weather events, this stop will be prone to sliding and a higher likelihood of vehicles passing the bus and running into the students. Snow from snowplows are deposited in the area of the bus stop, creating a critical blind spot for vehicles and a barrier for the students to reach the bus, putting 13-plus kids, ages ranging 3 to 10 years old, with a lack of self-control and safety and spatial awareness. In a limited, and with a limited waiting area, only further increases the likelihood of an accident or worse, death. We seek your assistance in moving this elementary school bus stop back onto Triad Court. We have submitted numerous complaints to the Office of Transportation Services and their administrators. They have yet to provide any official response and refuse to engage in any meaningful dialogues since August 17th. Student safety should come first and be the number-one priority to Prince, to the Prince William County School District and to this school board. We would be happy to provide additional information or answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kate Olsen Flynn.
Good evening, school board and chairman. My name is Dr. Kate Olsen Flynn, and my address is on file. It's nice to see you all again at the beginning of the new school year. I'm here once again to talk to you about issues of safety and equity in our school system, particularly as they relate to Woodbridge High School. However, I want to give you a bit of my background and why I care about these issues so much. I began my career in education as a bilingual teacher in Los Angeles, where I taught in elementary school. I later went on to earn my PhD in education from UCLA, one of the top research universities in the country. During my time as a teacher at UCLA and later at the university level, issues of educational equity, access, and excellence have always been my focus, particularly... particularly related to underprivileged populations. This is part of the reason I feel so strongly about what is happening in the county and at Woodbridge High School. In May 2017, I wrote a letter to you all on behalf of Parents Who Care, outlining at least 30 issues that we found unsafe in the high school or inequitable when compared to what other high schools have in Prince William County. While we thank you for some of the things that have been renovated, like stalls in the boys' bathroom and a bridge across the fields, many of these issues still have not been resolved, and we are now in September of 2018. Tonight, I'm only gonna address a couple of these issues that still need urgent attention. Concerning issues of safety, we were promised Wi-Fi access points. We still don't have them, and if so, then the Wi-Fi still doesn't work properly. This is a huge safety problem in this era of school shootings. If my child cannot contact me or the authorities while they are at school when in danger or problems arise, particularly in a tornado shelter like Woodbridge High School, where there are no windows or routes for escape, then you are not keeping my child safe. I don't care how many resource officers there are. My child needs access to Wi-Fi in case of emergency. The other issue of most immediate safety concern of ours is that I want to mention is the proposed turf field. Crumb rubber fields are unsafe for kids, period. While studies are being conducted as I speak with the EPA, there still does exist evidence that these fields cause cancer, and there is no way you should write a proposal for bids from companies that build fields using this material when there are ecologically safe materials that other companies can use. Furthermore, you know now that these fields are problematic and unsafe for the health of children. Therefore, being public servants, you should feel obligated to do the safest and choose the safest option for our children. I come to you all in good faith that these issues, as well as all the issues that we've raised in our letter, will be addressed. And for that reason, I implore you to act to improve the conditions at Woodbridge so that our students are provided with safe, equitable learning conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Gilli.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Jennifer Gilli, and my address is on file. I've been coming to these board meetings for the last two years discussing a tiny little school in Lakewood we'll call Woodbridge High School. We're very excited and thankful for the opportunity to receive a new turf field in the upcoming year and can't wait to see all of the plans and the finished product. I know Mr. Mallard will be meeting with us in the next week or so to review what has and has not been completed inside the school, as well as to give us information regarding the new field. We are appreciative of his time to meet with our parent group and review this information. Over the summer, without school board meetings to attend, I had a lot of time to research many different comments and questions that were placed before our parent group. The main thing that I was hearing is safety concerns regarding our turf field. Some schools and states have them, while others are now banning them for various reasons. This made me a big fan of Google search, so I could find out the goods and the bad. There is a lot of information out there, both pros and cons for these fields, so much so that I won't be able to get into all of it now. But again, I come back to the safety aspect. We still want the field, don't get me wrong. I can just see the entire football field coming after me right after this meeting, including my son. We absolutely want the field. We just want to make sure it is the best field that is available and the safest for our children. Last January, when we spoke with Mr. Klein and Mr. Mulgrew about the many things that had to be fixed at Woodbridge High School, I think they were tired of hearing of us compare everything to Colgan High School and how they have all the new stuff, and we, let's be honest, don't. They were quick to point out that when we put a new school in the county, they give the best of everything because it is slated to last a very long time for a lot of students, and we all agreed. And so since Woodbridge and Stonewall are up for the next turf fields in the county, we want to make sure they are receiving the best fields and the safest that you can offer at this point. When the problem started surfacing about concussions in athletes, you all did the right thing and instituted better equipment, better training for the staff, and better education for the students and families. When there is a problem that is recognized, you did not just tell those parents whose children had suffered a concussion, "It's okay, there's no conclusive evidence that this will affect him or her later in life." You did the right thing, became more educated, found the best and safest solution, and followed through so that the future PWC athletes would be better equipped. That's why we want you all to make sure this is done regarding the turf field issue. Please do not allow the RFP to be issued, only allowing crumb rubber fields to be installed in our county at this point. There are plenty of options available using organic materials instead of the crumb rubber that ends up in my carpet, on my floors, all over my car, and yes, all over my children. We need to see the other options that are out there, but with the RFP only allowing this type of field in the county, you are setting the athletes and families up for many possible problems down the road. Like the newer schools get, we only ask for the best and safest options for Woodbridge and Stonewall. They are next in line to receive the fields. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Riley O'Casey.
Good evening, Dr. Latif, board members, Mr. Iman. My name is Riley O'Casey, and I'm the president of the Prince William Education Association. My address is on file with the clerk. Today is Wednesday, and that means we wear red. I would like to thank those of you that wore red today to show your support for public education. Please keep wearing red. Wearing red every Wednesday means that's one less day you need to pick out an outfit, so there is an advantage. Don't forget, when you wear red, snap a photo and share it with PWEA. Tonight, you approved the 2019 legislative priorities. The Virginia Education Association has many of the same priorities, including funding for school employee salaries. And I've left something for the board with Mrs. Urban. There is no denying Virginia is facing a teacher shortage. During the 2017-2018 school year, over 800 teaching positions were unfilled the first day of school. Virginia ranks 32nd in the nation in average teacher salary and is more than 12% behind the national average, yet we rank seventh in wealth. And while the state funding has increased in recent years, when adjusted for inflation, it is only at the 2007 level. The Prince William Education Association appreciates the commitment of Dr. Walts, his staff, and the school board to ensure that all employees have had a step increase the last four years. This is a positive step in the right direction. During the 2016 General Assembly Session, state legislators voted 140 to zero to change the code of Virginia to the following. "It is a goal of the Commonwealth that its public school teachers be compensated at a rate that is competitive to attract and keep highly qualified teachers." And this was added, as used in this section, competitive means at a minimum at or above the national average teacher salary. I recently had a conversation with a colleague who said, "We did not go into this profession to become rich. We do this every day because we want to inspire children. We want to change lives. We want to make other professions possible. I just didn't know that after 27 years of teaching, I would need two part-time jobs to survive." Board members, this is why we wear red. Please join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to superintendent's time. Mr. Iman.
Good evening, everyone. And obviously, I am standing in tonight for Dr. Walts, who sends his regrets for not being able to be here. First, I'll let you know about two college fairs we have scheduled. The first will be September 24 at Stonewall Jackson High School in Manassas. The second is on October 11 at Potomac High School in Dumfries. Both fairs will be held from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and all juniors and seniors and their parents can explore post-graduation options and meet representatives from colleges and universities, technical schools, and the military. I'm happy to announce that this is the first year the school division's school guide and calendar has been expanded to include informational items for our high school students in addition to elementary and middle school. I encourage you to review your calendar for a variety of important items, including the concussion training dates for middle and high schools. As a reminder, concussion education training is required for all middle and high school athletes and their parents or guardians. Students who are trying out for a sport for their first time in a middle or high school or are new to the school division must attend a face-to-face concussion training at their respective school. The calendar also includes the weekly breakfast and lunch menu for elementary and middle schools as separate pull-out pages. And throughout the calendar, we included artwork by our students. The cover features art by three students. Hannah Correll, a student at Bristow Run Elementary, Zachary DeFeo from Benton Middle, and Connell Calvert, a senior at Woodbridge High School. And you had an opportunity to see the cover on the screen. Congratulations to Rockledge Elementary School for their designation as a 2018-2020 National PTA School of Excellence. This is a prestigious recognition which symbolizes a school's work as a national leader in developing strong family-school partnerships. Rockledge Elementary School is one of 24 schools in Virginia earning this distinction. Hamish Brewer, principal of Fredlin Middle School, makes two appearances in a Google YouTube video entitled "Celebrating Teachers: A Moment in Search." Mr. Brewer will also give a TED Talk on October 6 in Christchurch, New Zealand. So congratulations to Mr. Brewer, and of course, to all our principals and educational leaders for showing the world how to make a positive impact on education. These are just a few of the many great things, including countless student accomplishments, that will be happening this year. And I know that we can all agree that they are all positively PWCS. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iman. Next, we'll move to board matters. The revision of Policy 114, Conflict of Interest, and, now, did I skip something? Yeah, 1801, revision, no, Revision of Policy 503.01. Sorry about that. That's the conflict of interest. Ms. White? Are we doing, okay. So we did the first reading last time, and we pulled it down from board, from consent agenda for discussion. Mr. Iman.
Yes, I mean, was it your intention, Mr. Chairman, to move it forward for a vote and discussion, or just, I guess, just to be clear?
Yeah, no, so we, so I pulled it down from the consent agenda because we wanted to have a discussion on this Policy 503.01 and figure out a path forward. So I'll open up the floor for discussion. Ms. Satterwhite?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Point of order. Are we, are we voting on it today, or are we just gonna be talking about it today? What's the goal of the discussion?
So, we can do a number of actions, right? We could vote on it, we could, we have another, a number of choices, and a number of board members have asked me to pull it down. Two board matters to have a discussion on what type of action we can move forward on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I don't have any problems with the policy specifically because the policy is the part we do approve, except for the last line of the policy that expresses the support of the accompanying regulation. It's the regulation I have concerns about. The last part of the policy says all school board members and employees must be familiar with and comply with all provisions of the law and school board requirements regarding actual or potential conflicts of interest as summarized in Regulation 503.04-1. And so it's the new regulation I have some concerns about. We heard some concerns expressed last week with some confusion with members of the community. There's no doubt that we need to strengthen what we have in place. But today, we revised Policy 102, and in the first section of Policy 102, it says the Prince William County School Board believes that public awareness of the policymaking process is highly desirable and that considerations should be given to the views of teachers, parents, and other concerned citizens in the development and implementation of school division policies. And while the new regulation has been vetted by a lot of stakeholders, it hasn't been vetted by our teachers, by our parents, by our coaches. And I feel strongly that the people who are most going to be impacted by the changes with the regulation, I feel like we should be consulting with them. I would like to suggest that, I would like to move that we postpone this indefinitely because I would like to see that, I would like to see more vetting of this policy. And in order for this to be successful, I feel there has to be more understanding and support from our stakeholders. They need an opportunity to weigh in on the changes and how they're practically going to be carried out. And I want it to be supported by our stakeholders. I don't want this to fail once we get it started. I don't want it seen as retaliatory. I want these seen as the protective measures that we are putting in place for our parents, for our students, and for our coaches or teachers, just as it's intended to be. So again, I move to postpone this indefinitely until there's a chance for more information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Will Potomac.
I'm gonna, unrelated, I have comments. Are you looking for a second right away, or? I guess, we're still on the floors.
I think that's what's supposed to happen.
Oh, wow. I'm still on discussion mode.
I'll second the motion for discussion. You have a second to motion in order to discuss it.
So, do you find, so we'll second Allison's motion, and I'm opening the floor for discussion on her motion. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So, obviously, I've expressed some concerns about this. Similar ones that Ms. Satterwhite brought up and ones that I actually kind of agree with her about the community dialogue and bringing more stakeholders in here. First thing, I spoke with the board attorney, and I thought I should clarify because somewhere along the lines, people might have been confused that when I was using my analogies last time about a theater company that my wife hypothetically would own as my examples and my questions. I do not have a theater company. We do not own a theater company, a private business in this county. So just want to clarify that. I have no stake in that process. But although Ms. White did say it was good questions and examples because she used it in a meeting with principals too, so, there we go. So, so I, this is a complicated matter. I did meet with, I want to thank Ms. White, Mr. Mulgrew, central office staff for compiling some of this information that Mr. Deutsch requested. He'll probably talk about that. Some good information. And this is kind of where I feel like we're at. So, looking at this matter, just as I mentioned and alluded to at the last time, that there are states that have pretty defined black-and-white policies about this. Very outline regimented about what you can and cannot do. And, for example, it's right up the road in Maryland. Depending on what time of the day, it could be right up the road. But, to our north. And so Maryland, for example, has very defined rules in multiple scenarios. It's very black and white. You know, for example, you know, you cannot tutor a student from your own building in the building in which you work. Okay, there's one. Technically, in our county, you could do that in our conflict of interest, even with the current policy that exists. This is just one example. So, Virginia itself, when it comes to the state conflict of interest, when this, it's, I think I used the word, it's like the Wild West of kind of policies. Vague, nebulous, there's not a whole defined list, really, of what you can and cannot do. And I linked it kind of like the whole role of campaign contributions in Virginia. There's no limit on, you know, individual state races and how much people can donate. It's just very broad, very vague. And so that kind of leads to, again, some more issues. When we asked, and Mr. Mulgrew and his team compiled, about the hypothetical scenario that we were talking about of different staff members, whether sponsors or coaches, who may have kind of a stake in a private business that is related to the sport they coach or what they sponsor, it came out that we're looking at over 50% of our high school coaches, and I think 75% of our middle school. I think that was, maybe I'm wrong-ish, kind of around there. I know it's high, right? Decent numbers. And looking at the list and stuff like that. And so, you know, if we were going to, you know, adopt and let's just say rip off the Band-Aid and change that, I think we have to, you know, what Ms. White and what we all agreed is that, you know, this is about the kids. And if we were to adopt a policy very similar, or policies right away very similar to Maryland, I think we would have potentially a lot of kids without coaches and potentially not being able to fill those positions in the immediate time with those coaching positions. And ultimately, who loses in that? It would be the kids. I even asked HR, you know, typically for the hiring of a coach and stuff like that, "Are we getting tons of applicants?" And, "No, we're not." And so that's something we could think about as a committee when, if we are going to open this up and talk about, obviously, you know, teacher pay, as I've called for, is a huge priority and looking at potentially, you know, these stipends for coaches and sponsors and stuff like that to help increase the pool. So, going along with that, and then I think there's also some blurred lines of the different roles and stuff like that. You know, we have teachers who coach. We have teachers who coach and who might work for a company that privately does business or work in that sport or that area. We have also just coaches who are contracted to come in and be a coach who also have stake in a private for-profit company. So we have a bunch of different categories here that, you know, we are going to define things. I think we'd have to develop policies and regulations for that. things, I think we'd have to develop policies and regulations for that. And so, I think instead of continually just mitigating conflicts of interest as they arise, I think, again, my opinion, you know, but it would go along with, you know, what Ms. Satterwhite and others might have suggested, I think we have to look at these and start the process of potentially, depending on what our stakeholders feel, is defining some policies and outlining specific things in this. Again, that's my opinion, others may feel differently, I've stated this all along, this has been my opinion. I don't think we could have it defined exactly like a Maryland, you know, black-and-white approach of how you handle this, but I think we could take steps to eliminate the appearance of impropriety with these issues. Because, you know, I think we were taking a step in the right direction when it came to the usage of facilities, gyms, and fields. To be perfectly honest, I think taking that out weakens this, using the scenario, let's use my wife, Lucky, her again, and we do not have a theater company, but if she rented out the Forest Park Mini Theater with money, which is fine, that's her choice, she pays the bill, she's the drama teacher at Forest Park, she has a mini theater camp at Forest Park, advertises that she's the Forest Park Theater teacher, having a camp at Forest Park for her private business, I don't think it's an appearance of an impropriety, I think it is a conflict of interest. I do. I think we could take a step and make people who are coaches or sponsors in our buildings have to go to a different location, so that parents in the community don't feel like this is something sponsored in a sense at the school, that this is what they may have to put their kid in, starting very young, if they want their kid, in the scenario of my wife, to have a role in potentially a play down the road. So that's just one scenario that I think would be moving in the right direction. So, you know, along the lines with what Ms. Satterwhite was saying, is I do think we need to potentially form a committee of stakeholders and review this, whether it's putting defined policies in our coaching manuals, the contracts of the coaches, community use policies of our fields, of our gyms, of our specific rentals, of what we have, because I do believe that the appearances could be unsettling, and I think it would go a long way, at least to get stakeholder buy-in from those in our community, whether each board member appoints a member to serve, to have a community forum, that we hire an independent counsel who specializes in this type of area to oversee this. I think those would be good steps in the right direction. And so, I've said a lot, but I wanted to, this is something I'm very passionate about, and I definitely think it's worth delaying at this point and reviewing however the board feels fit. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to echo all of Justin's comments, and for this, for time's sake, I'll echo them. Ms. Satterwhite, would you agree that if I, if we cleaned up the language, if we substitute the motion, and it's essentially the same as yours in spirit, "I move that we table a vote on this policy, I move that we create a committee of stakeholders, teachers, administrators, and community members to make recommendations on a new conflict of interest policy?"
Okay, so you proposing the school board come up with a committee, or are we going to ask the superintendent's staff to come up with a committee? Because I'd rather see the superintendent's staff come up with the construct of the committee and work with the stakeholders instead of the school board doing it. And if we're going to have a member on the committee, we can let the superintendent's staff come up with that recommendation, or we can say we'd like to do that in addition to whoever they decide to pull together from constituents. I don't think we need to be in charge of putting together that committee, I think it'd be more appropriate, in light of what we've done in the past as a school board, that we ask the superintendent's staff to please put this together and bring the results to us.
Gil?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to follow up, as far as on the committee, I would say that if we're going to have the superintendents put the committee together before they actually execute it, they bring the recommend, they bring their proposal for the committee staffing back to the board, so we can review it and are comfortable with it before we go forward.
I'm okay with that, that's fine. Diane?
That's okay, we took care of that, thank you.
Justin?
I don't know if I could support, I personally would like the independent oversight. I'm not saying that they couldn't work with the superintendent's team to develop this committee, but I want to kind of go more in a sense of a specialist, someone in this field, who, this is the work that they do with conflict of interest policies, they, working, I guess, with support of administration, would possibly give us what their recommendations would be of the committee.
So, the way Gil proposed it would be that if they were to come up back to us with the structure of this committee, we could approve that or not approve that and make recommendations back. Is that how you perceive that, Gil? Allison? Justin, would you be okay with that? Justin, we would ultimately be the ones to approve the structure and formation of it, and if not, then it doesn't get approved?
I think moving forward in the direction's the right spirit to go towards, and obviously, my echoes, my sentiments have been echoed to what I would like to see, but again, we can go based off what, we can, we can move in that direction, yes.
Mary, do you have any rec, advice on this? Ms. McGowan? Okay. Gil? So, so the formal motion should read, then, how would you like it to read? Would you like me to read? So if we table a vote on the policy, "I move that we create a committee of stakeholders, teachers, administrators," so, instead of saying "we create," we direct? Direct the superintendent to create a
Proposed structure.
Committee of stakeholders, teachers, administrators, members, to make recommendations on the conflict of interest policy? Mr. Iman?
Obviously, we'll, the administration will follow the direction of the board. I would just say that if you say the stakeholders, that includes everybody, as opposed to trying to name any individual stakeholders, because we'll consider all of those stakeholder positions when we bring that forward.
So there, I could see some potential disagreement on who the stakeholders are, so I don't know if I need to outline that or not. Any thoughts on that?
I think that's something that we could also hash out, depending on what they bring back to us.
Okay.
Hearing the dialogue today, and the superintendent, Mr. Iman, will have a good idea of what we're thinking.
Gil?
Yeah, I agree with the statement, we can hash out, and we can also hash out who actually leads it, leads the effort as well.
Okay. Mr. Wilk, is that satisfactory?
Yeah, I think if we're going to have the discussion about the lead later on, I think, then that's fine.
Okay. Point of, do we got to get this over to Debbie? What am I doing with this? Or are we voting on this, or are we just agreeing to move forward with this as a recommendation?
Dr. Latif, you might want to have the parliamentarian weigh in at this point.
Oh, Mr. Parliamentarian, do I need to have a vote on this, as a board, we're?
You, you could ask for unanimous consent.
Okay.
The only thing I would say is, you don't really need to table something that hasn't actually been moved. There's been no motion to adopt this policy at this point. But what you can do is, you can ask unanimous consent to direct the superintendent to create this committee, and if there's no objection, that's adopted.
Okay, thank you, sir. Can I have unanimous consent? Unanimous consent to create this committee as in the spirit we discussed this evening? All in favor? Any, any opposed? The motion passes. Is that correct? Okay, we'll move on to Revision of Policy 101, Authority and Purpose. I'm going to move this to Ms. McGowan to give us a brief, do we need to go, if you want to give us a brief, third, run-through?
Actually, I was the person that asked for it to be placed.
Oh, got it. Well, yes, please.
I really just needed some clarification. If we could look at Policy 101. The first item, the mark-throughs, 1 through 6, I just want some clarification of what this really means. For example, in Items 4, Item 4, that was deleted. Am I correct?
All of those sub, I'm sorry. All of, all of— Ms. Jessie, all of those sub-paragraphs, which are quite old, were deleted primarily because the board's authority is set out in law, and its, its specific tasks or duties, if you will, are set out throughout all of the different policies that the board has adopted. And some of the ones that are in these numbered paragraphs are inconsistent with current practices and current policies.
I just want a clarification, for example, on, to decide upon the means and method of instruction to selection of textbook and other teaching aids, that does not impact the fact that the textbook committee would still report to the board, and the board would have a vote on textbooks?
No, it does not. Your existing policy on textbook selection and the board's ability to weigh in on that remains intact.
Okay. Number 5, to act on personnel recommendations by the superintendent. Are there, what happens when there are true exceptions because of the severity of some action, some personnel action? Is that clarified by law also?
That's all laid out in the law, and in the, in the provisions that the board is, the policies the board has adopted enacting those provisions of the law. The, the board's role as the ultimate hire and firer and decision-maker remains intact.
Okay. I, that, I just wanted clarification, other than that, I did not want to vote, I just wanted to have clarification. As I said, you know, we put it in the consent agenda, but most of us will go back and read this stuff and think, well, what does that really mean? And there was a lot of red here, so.
There was, there was, and there are going to be some coming down the pike, they're going to have even more red. Try to make sure you have a heads-up on those.
Yeah, I know, I want to make sure I have a heads-up, thank you.
We will vote on 18.02 tonight, so as the Revision of Policy 101, can I have a motion on approving that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the Revision of Policy 101, Authority and Purpose.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Ms. Jessie, seconds. First was Mr. Deutsch. Discussion? While you're tallying those, I'm going to move on to 1803, which is Revision of Policy 114, Conflict of Interest and Deletion of Regulation Conflict of Interest, first reading. So the next few are going to be, all of the hundred series were just reviewing, revising, cleaning up. This will be the first reading of 114, 115, 115-1, 115, 122, 123. I'll have Mary go through them. Ms. McGowan, if you wanted to just give us a headliner on each of these?
Happy to do that. Policy 114, Conflict of Interest, this is the conflict of interest provision that relates to the school board. It's been revised to pretty much follow the language of the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act as it pertains to school board members and elected officials. We have also incorporated previous language that was in Regulation 114-1, and are, so that the motion on this would be to adopt Policy 114 as revised and to delete Regulation
Gil?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've already provided my input to Ms. McGowan as far as the actual content. I do have one, something to start me this evening is, the fact that the title for 114, Conflict of Interest, is the exact same as the title of 503.01, Conflict, Conflict of Interest. I get one is for the board and the other one's for the school division. I would suggest we change the name in some small fashion, just to distinguish them a little bit.
That's a great idea.
Outstanding, sir. Created a lot of confusion.
How about Conflict of Interest for school board members?
Excellent, outstanding. Any more discussion on this one? Let's move on to Revision of Policy 115, Compensation and Reimbursement of School Board Members. Deletion of Policy 115.01, Compensation, Regulation, Deletion, Prince William County.
Right. This is a compilation of a bunch of scattered policies and regulations that all bore on the same subject, which was compensation of school board members. So we have revised Policy 115 and renamed it Compensation and Reimbursement of School Board Members. That's old, we've combined into it Old Policy 115.01, which dealt with reimbursement, and we have deleted Policy 115.01 and its ancillary regulation, which also dealt with compensation. It's all rolled into one. These have all been reviewed and the changes approved by the Department of Finance.
Thank you, Mary. Any discussion on that? Gil?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to make this discussion just because my name's tagged to a comment that's in here about removing, removing a language about the pay for the chairman, so, and, don't take it personal. So, the Virginia state law allows for the chairman to make $2,000 more per year than the rest of the school board members, and that language is actually—
And that's why I'm here, by the way.
Right.
Be clear about this for everyone.
That language is actually in there, however, also, Virginia state law says that we can only change our pay in election years, and right now, you don't make that full $2,000, so by changing the policy to get the $2,000, to increase, bump that up this year, I think we would have been in violation of state law. So basically, what this means is, we'll have to come back and relook this next year if we want to change that.
Mary?
I, I agree. Mr. Trenum has been the world's best editor on these.
Outstanding. Your red lines are fantastic. Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thought, and I'm usually not a huge fan of regulations, in terms of having too many, but I think there actually could be a really useful role of a regulation right here. There's been a lot of different discussions about what board members can or can't be reimbursed for, and a lot of it ends up being, you kind of ask around and figure out what practice is, and it'd be nice to have a regulation that puts it all in one place. So is that possible to do in?
I would really, I suspect that Mr. Wallingford, where he here, would say that that's pretty much addressed in the financial guidelines or manual that applies to employees, since board members are, basically get the same, the same treatment, or have to submit their compensation and reimbursement under the same processes. I'm pretty sure there's a manual on all that, but I'd really like to get his input. But we can always come back and add a regulation if, if—
Yeah, we're not typical employees, shall we say? So, there may be, there are differences in terms of what we're reimbursed for, and it would be nice to have a, a school board member version of the reimbursements, just so there's clarity one way or another.
We can certainly ask and have that, bring that back as a tag-on, right?
Appreciate it.
Mr. Trenum?
Mr. Chairman, I would agree, for no other reason, for the simple fact that regulations are out there in public and people can see what they are. The financial manual's buried somewhere in this building, and Lord knows where it's at, but it's, it's not, I think for transparency, it would be good for us to have, have those items in, some sort of regulation is publicly available.
So, this is the, so great. This is the first reading. Remind everyone to take a look at this over the next few days, and, and come back with any recommendations for the second reading, and we can have certain discussions then as well. Ms. Jessie?
I just need a clarification on 115 related to 12201 area. How, are those two related, or, I noticed that all of the, those are deleted for 12201. Is there a relationship between one, those two, 115 and 12201?
Yes. Old 12201 that we're asking to be deleted had two parts. One had to do with the election of the chairman, and that's already covered in a more comprehensive policy, talking about board elections and membership, et cetera. The second part of that had a paragraph dealing with compensation, saying that we, that the board could pay the chairman an additional salary, but that's, that's a matter that's, that's provided by state law. And so I, I think just getting rid of this extraneous one helps us clean up the whole manual.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, great, we'll move on to adoption of Policy 116, Vacancies on the School Board. Deletion of Policy 125, Vacancies.
This was, this was a revision of the Policy 116 to correlate it primarily with the statutory scheme that determines how board vacancies are filled. This was originally updated several months ago, even in the spring, working closely with the parliamentarians' input. That was precipitated by a number of things, including, you'll recall, the famous legislative changes having to do with the replacement of a board member due to a military vacancy, otherwise known as the Mr. Trenum Bill. So we made those changes in the spring, but we waited until the summer to bring it, to get forward with the rest of them. We also added the procedures for nomination and election, as were set forth in, in Revised Policy 135, and Mr. Mr. Balch was very helpful in making sure that we were following the board's preferred practice and parliamentary procedure on that.
Discussion? Excellent, we'll move on to 122, Authority and Responsibilities of Chairman-at-Large, Vice Chair, other members of the school board.
This was a revisions, renumbering of old Policy 12202, which needs to be deleted, or recommended to be deleted. It was redesignated numerically to avoid using the decimal system that's been kind of plaguing the policy manual. We— that's been kind of plaguing the policy manual. We have deleted the reference in there to the chairman appointing committees. It's inconsistent with the past and current practices. And policy 170, committees and councils, which governs the method that the board members use to appoint people to committees and councils.
Discussion. Okay. We'll move on to 123, duties of the clerk and deputy clerk, deletion of policies 123.
This was a, this will be a new policy adoption due to the numbering system. It's, it's really old policy 12301, old policy 12302, and old regulation 123-02-1, all combined into one handy policy. We adopted some of the statutory language regarding the responsibilities of the clerk that was not previously contained in there. And at Mr. Trenum's suggestion, we added the highlighted sections, which were added to the agenda and sent to the board on Monday.
Discussion. Gil? I know you're good. Any other discussion? And again, everyone can chime in along this next couple of weeks, but go ahead. Ms. Jessie?
I had made some notes, but is this the one where we talk about the superintendent having input, the clerk's responsibility, and who does the clerk report to? There were several pages here, so I may have been.
Mary?
Yes, that's correct, Ms. Jessie. This talks about the clerk and the deputy clerk. You'll see in the yellow highlighted, added by Mr. Trenum, that they're supervised by the school board. And their performance evaluations and other appropriate personnel actions are, are signed by the chairman-at-large, incorporating input from the board, members as authorized by majority vote of the board.
Okay. I found the page I was looking at. I guess I had.
You see the red line version of 123?
Yeah. I had a question about, on 123.01, I think it is here. But it says that the clerk shall be established by the school board, having considered the advice of the superintendent. I just wonder what that looks like. And it says, under the general direction of the superintendent. So who does a clerk report to?
The board. Well, under the language suggested by, by Mr. Trenum, they were report to and be supervised by the school board.
So what is the role of the superintendent when it comes to the clerk?
Well, I would assume that the superintendent would carry out any duties relative to the clerk that the board assigned to him.
Assigned by us?
You're correct. This is a change to the original language that Mr. Trenum suggested, that the reporting structure be directly to the, to the board.
It somehow looks a little, it, when I say the superintendent, the advice of the superintendent, then the general direction from the superintendent, such as other duties in connection with school business as required by law. When you go for the training, there is a code that directs us of the role of the clerk and who the clerk reports to. How does that, how does this align with that?
The statutory section says that the clerk shall perform such duties as directed by the superintendent, subject to the school board's, subject to the school board's ultimate authority. So the superintendent is seen as generally supervising the clerk under the statute, but still subject to direction of the, of the board. And this is an area that, you know, again, as I put here, for possible discussion. If you, if you want to think this one over a little longer, perhaps suggest additional changes.
Somehow it lacks clarity for me. It just doesn't define. And then it says, at the bottom, it says, the deputy clerk and the superintendent are responsible for implementing and monitoring this policy. Yes. But anyway, that's something I can look at and.
That's one of the reasons I sent these out.
Yeah.
In months ago.
I know. I read it and I.
But, but if people find that they have additions or concerns about the suggested language, my recommendation is that we just move it to the next board meeting. And in the interim, you could get me those concerns and we could come up with another version for the board to look at at the next meeting. Just keep it in the pipeline, but move it along for change. You could get me whatever revisions you want.
Can we do this? Go ahead and put it on consent. And then if I have additional questioning, I have not thought through the, a different type of language that I would use, but this language just seems too general and nonspecific for me in terms of her role. And I may reread it again and decide, well, maybe it's just, or I can chat with you about it. How about that?
It's fine. We could go ahead and put it on consent for next.
Okay.
Move to consent for the next time. And in the interim, we'll work together on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone? Diane?
Thank you. Ms. Mary?
Ms. Diane?
The policy, as I read it way back when, it seems like, because I can, I know it's old, but didn't it say that the superintendent supervised the clerk and the deputy clerk? Please, read it to me, please.
It read, it read exactly as the statute says.
Yeah. Because that's where we get confused. Everybody's trying to tell somebody something and the next person something. And before you know it, nobody knows anything.
The clerk shall discharge under the general direction of the division superintendent, such other duties in connection with the business of the school division as may be required of him by the school board or the board of education.
But that's the kind of work we do anyway.
Yes.
So.
So the language that Mr. Trenum suggests is a little bit different from that. And if there are board members that would like me to reinsert the language about the superintendent having general direction, subject to the, subject to the direction of the board, as required by the board, I can, I can read lang, I can change that language.
Yes.
Mr. Trenum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm all for making everything clearer, more clear. And that's actually the reason why I suggest we insert the language, because, I mean, we've had this discussion a number of times, a number of times over a number of years, actually. And so there's always this, what does, you know, what does the general direction of the division superintendent, da, 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 what does all that mean? What it really boils down to at the end is, we have, we have a responsibility to W and B to tell them, who do you work for? Who do you work for? Who writes your performance evaluation? And they only have one boss. They can either have the superintendent as the boss, or they can have the board. But they can't have both. And the way, the way it's, the way that we've been executing and over the last decade has been to essentially work for the, work for the school board. The superintendent has his staff already. The other thing is, Ms. McGowan pulled us some comparative information, and that's not, our practice is not inconsistent with some of the other thing, what some of the other school divisions are doing. So that it's one of those deals that it seems like everybody tries to, everybody finds something that fits for them. So, but I do think we have, we have an obligation to let them know very specifically who they work for and who signs their performance, who signs their performance reviews.
So we'll see a lively discussion on email this week, okay? Excellent. Good? Good, everyone? Oh, Mr. Willie Deutsch of the Coles District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to echo the comments from Mr. Trenum. At the end of the day, we hire directly our attorney, the clerk, now the parliamentarian. We hire a very, a very few grouping of people directly. Everybody who works here in the Kelly Building has to work together well. It's the way everything works. But at the end of the day, the clerk and deputy clerk, they're our clerks. They clerk for the board. Everybody else has secretaries, staff, et cetera. And so we don't, you know, we don't need a combination of other people claiming our clerks for us. So our clerks are ours, and codifying that is a good thing.
Mr. Wil, I just want to echo support for that, that they are with the school board. Ms. Satterwhite?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to echo those comments that they are our clerk and our deputy clerk. They are a responsibility of the school board. They are our employees that we hire. And I believe they also need to be under supervision of the school board.
Ms. Jessie?
So, so are they under the supervision of the chair? When you say the school board, I don't think they can have eight bosses. That's, that's just me. So I just think, I think to relook at it down the road. And I, for me, I need to get with Mary and kind of look through all of these, because they, they can't have several bosses. So that's just my comment.
Mr. Chairman, with that clear direction, I revise this.
Excellent. Fantastic. And you know, for you at home watching, we have another bunch of the hundred series next week, even more exciting, even more fun.
Oh, that's going to be fun.
Next, if it's okay with the board, we'll move to 18.08, Career and Technical Education Advisory Council appointment. Mr. Gil, Trenum?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointment of Ms. Chelsea Foscoia as a representative for the principal district on the Career and Technical Education Advisory Council, Council for a term effective September 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Excellent. While we tally those votes, we will start with board matters. I think, oh, Ms. Mary McGowan.
Just a point of order. I think we haven't had a vote on 1802, 1803, or 1804.
I think we did.
Oh, you're right. They are first reads. I take it back.
We did vote on revision of one, of policy 101. That's what we did vote on, right? Okay. We'll start with Mr. Willie Deutsch of the Coles District for board matters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are on a roll for quick meetings, and it's a good thing. So hopefully we'll be out well before 9:30.
With your support.
I will, I will. There's, there's, speaking of the upcoming policies, there is a friendly amendment coming from one of the other members about time length of board matters, speeches, and that's going to be a very useful thing. But anyway, I want to, I want to share an idea. And we are heading into the fall. We've got the start of the school year. We're heading towards budget season, CIP. Last year, we talked, or at last meeting, we talked about the opening of our new non-traditional school. And we got to celebrate that start of the year. We got to celebrate even more as we named the courtyard at the last board meeting. And in a lot of ways, we got to see the board, really a crowning accomplishment of this board so far on this school year in terms of really a creative school building. It takes advantage of creative layouts and designs to create optimal educational environments for kids and do it in a, in a creative way. And also with a lot of the brand new technology furniture, ways to really be forward-thinking about how we do education for a, a certain group of students. And if you've gotten a chance to tour that building, it's really exciting and incredible. It's inspiring, and it's a lot of fun. And so when we can do something new and different, we can really showcase what we can do as a board. And so I'm going to put out an idea for us all to think about, mull, and keep talking about heading into the CIP session. We've got a 13th high school we're about to build. But believe it or not, we've got a 14th high school coming up. And we have a really cool opportunity, we could, if we wanted to, do something very different. Right now, in the country, there is a deficit of blue collar jobs. There are more vocational and blue collar jobs available than are to fill. They're great paying jobs. They can open up opportunities for the future for kids. And we're doing a lot of great work preparing students for the future who may not want to go to college, but may want to have an exciting, awesome job straight out of high school, in a lot of our high schools currently. But what we could do is with the 14th high school, have really a centerpiece for the county of a school we build for the ground up for a career and technical high school. And give every kid opportunities that we've been, we've been able to craft from the very get-go in terms of how we lay out this school. Loudoun just opened a school in this vein, and it's incredibly exciting. Everything from the stairs and the cafeteria are all about flexible designs for education to maximize educational opportunities. And we can have, and so when we think about a new type of school for the future, we could have a, a lot of things we do differently and optimal, optimize for the future here. And this would provide the opportunities for kids who may not thrive on studying books and tests and writing essays, which are awesome and incredible. But when you give people a project and show them that their school can directly lead to a brand-new future and a job, and you can see the light come on in their eyes and the excitement and the joy that gives new purpose to that schooling. And so that's not to take away from what we're doing for so many kids in so many of our high schools. But the opportunity to do this from the ground up would be exciting. And it would be a great way to continue to provide more opportunities. So just a beginning and want to just plant that seed. And hopefully, we can keep thinking about this as we move towards the CIP discussion coming up in a while. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Ms. Lori Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just start with, I think Mr. Deutsch has a very good idea. However, considering the 14th high school is going to relieve populations in my district, and I believe in Lilly's district was the goal of the 14th high school, and with the current success of our CTE programs that we have now, and as an advocate who's spent the entire time up here pushing for more modern, more creative and flexible internal structures within our schools that we built for 75 years, I think it's a good idea. But I'm hesitant to use our 14th high school about that, because we have a dire need for just seats for our students. And as someone who graduated university, coming from a project-based academic program, I'm all in favor of, you know, doing more project-based learning. But I think if we're going to talk CIP, we could talk preschool, because we definitely have a serious lack of preschool education in this county and affordable preschool for our students. And we know from research that the best bang for our buck goes for preschool. So I think that'd be great, maybe not with our 14th high school, with maybe some other type of project, because we definitely need to fill those seats. And I'd hate to see the students in my district or the Ockham district be at a deficit, because all we've put up was a CTE school that we already have existing programs for. But I do like the idea. I think it's great. I mean, I just think it comes with a lot of more questions, like where would we put it? How would it be accessible? What would we do with our current specialty programs, those kind of things. So I think it's definitely worth further discussion for its merit. But it does raise a lot of red flags with me when we have a real, serious overcrowding issue. Next up, my board matters, I just want to apologize to those few back-to-school nights that I did miss. As a person who can't seem to ever have a functioning car, that was my problem once again, is that I was not able to make it there. So I apologize to those schools. I know that some of them are having more back-to-school nights, so I will be in attendance to those. I also wanted to take time to ask if we could for the next board meeting, either the next one or the one after, if we could get an update on what was going on with our special ed after we had the audit, for lack of a better term, if we could. I know that it's somewhere in the pipeline. I don't need any answers tonight, but maybe when, you know, we're going to get an update on what's going on and how we're evolving in that department, because I know we're doing great things. I'd just like to get an update on that. I also wanted to know if we could get an update on the program capacity. I know that we were supposed to be looking at, we finished review for elementary schools, and we were supposed to be looking at. and we were supposed to be looking at middle and high schools for program capacity, and I haven't heard anything about that, and I'm really interested, especially considering we are in the works for building a 13th high school, and we have a 14th high school coming down the road. I wanted to know how that will, the new capacity numbers will affect what we're doing as a board. In addition to that, I just wanted to make a general announcement to piggyback off what Mr. Eman was saying with our college fairs. I would highly encourage not only our juniors and seniors to attend, but our freshmen and our sophomores and their families to attend. By the time you hit your junior year, it's too late to start planning for college, I'm not saying that it's not possible, but I think you get a better opportunity to really see what's out there. If you start to take your student in the ninth grade or the 10th grade, as opposed to waiting to your 11th grade year, that's what I did with my children, no one's gonna kick you out or check your ID to make sure that you're a junior or a senior. I know that space is limited at those type of events, and it does get really crowded, but as a mother who took a rising sophomore, I mean, a rising, yeah, rising sophomore and a baby, we all managed to fit, and it worked out great. So, I just would hope to see more families come with their younger students. It's also great if you have younger siblings, if you could bring them, because they usually tend to emulate what their older siblings do, and they're already starting to think about that. So, I just wanted to add that, and to also add that we will have an upcoming Parents' Summit, just like our college fairs, that we have one on either end of the county. Just encourage our families to start looking at the Parents' Summit and thinking about registering and being ready. There's a lot of information covered, and I've gone now, I think, three years, and I still learn something new every year. I think it's one of the most valuable programs that we put out in the county. And then, for our next, if we could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to the agenda a discussion on having our student representatives have the option to attend the state conference overnight, because there is a segment dedicated to student board representatives. I know when we initially voted to have the student representatives on the board, we did not permit them to do overnight trips, because there was some concern about, you know, having a student representative board and it being so new. I think that it's been a successful venture for us, and I think it would further enhance the representatives' knowledge while serving, if they were able to attend and meet other student representatives in the state of Virginia. So, I'd like the board to be able to bring that matter up for discussion. And that's it, thank you.
Ms. Wilk.
I'll be brief, succinct. Just highlights of the last two weeks.
Succinct.
Yeah.
Brief is fine.
Brief, succinct, whatever. Was able to visit a couple of schools, Mary Williams, Patty, Montclair, Henderson, stopped by during the day, and be able to go in the classroom, so I want to thank those principals. Did go to one of the, actually, I only had one back-to-school night the last two weeks, Potomac Middle School, great event, good turnout with the parents there. And I also was able to attend Montclair Elementary, had a watchdogs night, and want to recognize Assistant Principal Danny Miller, and Mr. Martinez, the parent coordinating that at Montclair Elementary. And that is it for me.
Ms. Ralston.
Thank you. I want to thank the parents who came out just before the rain, right after the rain, to see, to go to classes for the children of Hampton Middle School. And so, it was a very, it was a good evening, even though it had stormed a lot, and children take their parents, of course, to each one of their classrooms. So, you know, what I liked a lot was listening to the children. "This way, Mama." "No, no, over here." "Now, we're gonna go down that hallway." "That's good." They love their school, so I like that. That's important. The other thing is that, hopefully, Mr. Chairman, I had asked, matter of fact, I asked before you came, and now I'm asking you, about the four minutes. I don't, I haven't seen it anyplace in particular.
It'll be coming up in the revision of the Hundred Series.
Oh, thank you, okay. So, thank you very much, and that's it.
Mr. Giltrunam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was a dare. First off, I want, Mr. Farage, I want to make one comment on something you said earlier. Remember, it's always budget season. Never forget that. Had back-to-school nights at Pennington and Noakesville Middle Element, and Noakesville K8 for the middle schools, and also Marsteller, and then it's Gainesville Middle tomorrow night, so it's middle school season at that, right now. It was wonderful, although, like I said before, it's kind of weird going to these things without having kids in the system. So, one thing I would ask, Mr. Chairman, is that we could, last year during budget season, we approved basically a million dollars for, to fully fund a number of security upgrades. A lot of that work was slated to be done over the summertime, or at least planned for. I would ask that if our staff could give us a briefing, I would imagine that would be a closed-session briefing, on what they've implemented, what they've been able to accomplish out of those so far, based on the previous list we had, and then what the plan is going forward. So, whether that's at the next board meeting, or the one after that, we can work that out, but I would like to see that sooner rather than later, if we could. One comment, so, on the consent agenda this evening, there was the legislative priorities. We discussed those at the last board meeting. I had a couple of concerns about some of those, about two items in there specifically. I noticed those items were still in there. I went ahead and voted for it on the consent agenda, because I didn't want to cause extra discussion and extra contention, because honestly, I don't think we're gonna have that much success on those two particular areas. So, I think the impact is not that significant, but I do want to point out what they are. Number one, number seven is, was eliminating some of the requirements regarding advanced permissions and stuff like that. If we were to, just lay this out there, if we were, if that was to change so that we don't have to get permissions, I am going to be coming back to the superintendent and saying, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna lay out exactly what we, where we're gonna give, where we would release things without permission, and anything other than that, I would want that to be very constrained. I would not be feel comfortable with a blanket release on that. The other one is the statement of support for the use of VSP, VSPA bonds for computer refresh funding. Like I said, I don't think we're, it's gonna go anywhere, but if for some reason it does, I'll tell you right now, I'm gonna fight it tooth and nail if we come back for it, because I think it's a bad idea. That's all, thank you.
Ms. Satterway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, I received a phone call from a parent, and thankfully, the child is okay, but she was letting me know that her child was almost hit in a crosswalk on the way to school today while on her bike. And it not only happened once, but twice, because the child went home, the parent went back with the child, and a different driver who was not paying careful attention almost hit her child. So, I just want to ask everybody to please be careful, and the roads surrounding our schools, surrounding our middle schools, our high schools, or elementary schools, please be careful, be attentive, put down the phone, put down the coffee, and realize that our kids are on the way to school, and they are our most precious possession. And we love them, we value them, and we don't want anything to happen to our kids. There was also an incident that happened in one of our schools earlier this year, where a student went between cars. So, also, talk to your kids about the safe ways to cross schools. This particular incident that I was called about today, Mrs. Hart assured me that she's already working on it, and so we'll have some solutions hopefully soon, and she's told me she'll let me know as soon as she has some answers. But just ask everybody to be careful. Talk to your kids about safety, and ask, you know, all of us to please be careful as you're driving around our schools, and watch out for our kids. I've been to several back-to-school nights also this year, and one of them that I visited was Stonewall Middle School, where a 17-room addition is in progress right now, and the steelwork is going up, in the midst of all the crazy rain we've had, the construction is still going. We also are getting the auditorium refurbished, and while I didn't see the seats in yet, it's supposed to be happening about now, the auditorium is absolutely gorgeous. So, Stonewall Middle School is our original Stonewall Jackson High School, now it's the middle school. It's been there for I don't know how many years, but it, the, 50 years now? It's an absolutely gorgeous auditorium. So, I want to thank the school board facilities for all the work that's going on, because I'm so impressed with the work that's being done there. Speaking of 50 years, Tyler Elementary School will be celebrating its 50th anniversary this year, and I just recorded a board brief there. We'll be having announcements later on, as the committee gets together the date they're going to be celebrating. And as I mentioned in the board briefs, my own daughter was a Tyler Tomcat when she was in kindergarten through second grade. So, it was a lot of fun to be back there, and it'll be a lot of fun to celebrate their 50th anniversary. And that's all.
Ms. Jessie.
First, I just wanted to respond to Willie's, I'm sorry, I shouldn't call you by your first name, but Mr. Deutsch's recommendation for career education. I have grown as a person on this board, because when I first came on this board, everything for me was about college, college bound, college bound. I've learned a great deal in the last five years, and I know that we need to think about career education. In fact, I am asking, and I'm asking again, to meet with Ms. Goss and with the, Mr. Wright, because he and I have been working on some projects together, and I did not want to announce anything before the board, before chatting with the two of you. But career education is critically important. In terms of my school, Woodbridge High School does not have windows. So, I would suggest that we build a new Woodbridge High and maybe put the career education at Woodbridge High. Okay? I'm only kidding. Anyway, but we need another high school on our end of the county. But tonight, I really want to talk about the fields. And Wayne Mallard and I have worked together, and he's worked with me, and I've worked with him. I think we both kind of know each other, and he knows me. So, when this situation came up about the use of turf and what we were gonna put in the turf, and I received this 179-page report from EPA, I found myself just genuinely concerned about the health and well-being of our kids, because having read that report, which was in 2009, that report has since been refuted by the EPA office, and they've changed their position. And there's another report, 2016, where the EPA determined that these tire rubber types of infill should be put in our fields, because they needed to do something with the used tires. So, since that time, I've been deep in reading several reports, to include the 2016, another report is coming out in 2018. That report has not really been finalized, it's up for peer review. So, I just wanted to share with you some thoughts for us as a system, when it comes to not just Woodbridge High School, but our concern about safety for our kids. First of all, I knew nothing about the fields. I went to the fields, I looked at the fields, and I was shocked to see all these little black beads on top of the surface. And so, I was concerned about the safety, and in doing the research, I wanted to share with the board and with the superintendent a couple of things. The, my understanding is that the RFP will be written in a manner that companies that use what is considered more environmentally safe infill will not be able to come up for bid, and only the tire chrome rubber fields will be installed. First and foremost, I'm not an expert at this. In fact, much of my research, including reading the information sent to me by the superintendent, however, the material focused on methods to conduct investigation, exposure to it, and the impact, there's information that has been changed, and we really need to look at it. First, there are more than 11,000 send these type of fields with the chrome rubber in the country. The goal is to find a way to recycle used tires. As a result, 95% of our fields in North America use recycled rubber infill. The major concern came in with Amy Griffith, who was working with soccer kids, soccer players. She found, first she found 38 kids who had cancer, and that they, of 200, then she later found, after doing more research, that 200 athletes had cancer. 185 of those were soccer players, but 111 were goalies, because they hit that surface fast, and that creates problem. What has come out of the 2016 report is that there is a huge data gap of whether or not this turf, this crumble, rubber tire crumble, is, causes other conditions. In the 2009 report, only three fields were looked at. The newest one in 2016, there are, at least 40 fields are looked at, and it's really a result of the findings of Amy Griffith. There are three concerns when it comes to this turf. One, ingestion by players. Two, inhalation by players. And three, dermal skin problems, as they hit the surface, and these little black beads. And if you get a chance, please go and look at them. I'm just hoping that when we get new information, that we can act on it. They found that more than 30 compounds have been found, including lead, cobalt, mercury, zinc, and other agents that are cancer-causing. There is no definite research that says it causes cancer, but there is no definite research that says it doesn't. When we learned about what's going on with concussion and brain injuries in football players, we did better. So, what I'm asking the school division to do, we have new information, and I would like for us to do better. I'm asking us to at least begin to reconsider our decision. Like Montgomery County no longer uses it, Hartford, Connecticut is phasing out, Massachusetts has a three-year moratorium, New York stopped using these, this infill in 2009, and so has Los Angeles. So, I talked to the peer lawyer, this is a corporation for labor practices, and they basically have all the reports, and if you want information on how to get more recent and updated information, I'll be glad to share that with you. I'm asking for us to consider Woodbridge High for an alternate material, and maybe perhaps be a pilot for the following reasons. Better safety, better, there are conflicting views, but why not, why don't we just look on the side of safety? Parents are concerned, and I know we, parents get involved, and we don't want parents to get too involved, and we want to make sure we have autonomy, but the kids are their kids, these are their kids that they're worried about. According to my research, my understanding, the cost for a safer, environmentally safe surface will not cost much more, and it will be easier to maintain. I know that there's concern about what do we do about other schools, other high schools, where we have the tire rubber. I think we look at it, and we maybe think about phasing, phasing in a more environmentally safe surface for our kids. It's not about Woodbridge High, it's about all of our kids at all of our schools. I want to thank Mr. Mallard, who will be meeting with Woodbridge High, and the administrators there, and also with the parents who care. This is a very precise, and they do comprehensive studies, and we're still dealing with the school that doesn't have the type of technology the other schools have. It's not just not being able to call people, but, you know, the type of technology, they still have chalkboards in that school. So, I'm just, again, reminding the school system and the board to look at finding a better surface for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. So, I will finish the
So I will finish this evening. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Pastor Keith Savage for a lovely invocation. Thank you, sir. And thank you for staying with us for the whole evening. Truly appreciate it. If you haven't been over to his church, it is one of the historic churches in Prince William County. It's over 140 years old, so I think it's worth taking a look at. It's built right after the Civil War. Is that correct? I'd like to echo what Ms. Williams said, and you know, many folks have heard me say this on the college fairs, for example. You know, I know some of them are limited for juniors and seniors, but if you have a chance, try to get to a college fair. And this goes to sort of a theme that I'll sort of point out all the way through, from kindergarten all the way to 12. The students that do well, the students that get into specialty programs, governor's schools, the colleges of their dreams, the career technical education program they want to, aren't necessarily the ones who are either the most talented or the smartest, but they're the ones who had the best plan, the ones who put together a strategy, the ones whose family and student and teachers shared an engagement on how best to move forward. I agree with Ms. Williams. You decide you want to start looking at colleges in 11th grade, sometimes it's too late at that point. The competitive colleges or the college programs that are most attractive to people are the ones that you may miss out on. For example, getting into the Fine and Performing Arts Program, the application requires submitting a portfolio of work, creative work, your music, almost a resume of your successes over fifth, sixth, seventh grade. A lot of parents, including me, will take artwork and say, that looks great, hang it on the wall, it turns yellow, and then I pitch it. But you know, that could have been part of the resume as he applies to the CFPA. Sometimes it's not the most talented to get in, it's the kids with the best plan and strategy and kudos to them. I think that's great. So as, as we look at our programs, you know, if you're a parent out there and you've been to back-to-school nights, ask a lot of questions. Find out what's on the websites. The teachers and the schools share and they want to be transparent. They have these great websites. Some of them are very interactive. Our schools are really trying to help engage our students and families to try to learn more about what's out there for them. And our presentation for Positively Prince William, Kilby, was outstanding and they did a lot of great work with parental engagement. So I would, you know, take up all of the offers that the teachers and schools and school system offer. Next, a little theme on volunteers. You know, last night I went to the SEAC meeting, that's our Special Education Council, and they were there for about two hours last night. I got to the last part of it. I was, you know, I was blown away by the volunteers who take their time out to come to this meeting monthly to advocate on behalf of students with special needs for their district, for the division, for all of us. I was just very impressed by their time, their commitment, their thoughtfulness. They spent quite a bit of time looking at the audit we put out last year and coming up with ideas and plans. I truly appreciate their time. Some of the members on that committee have been on there seven or eight years. I was just fascinated and so I want to thank them. I've been to back-to-school nights. A lot of these back-to-school nights run with great volunteers, parent volunteers, teacher volunteers who are coming after school, you know, sometimes to do extra work and our PTO reps who are there at that front desk checking in people, handing out the maps, and the student volunteers who are there. So thank you to all our great volunteers. The school system can't run without you. And I went to Reagan, I went to Saunders, I went to Garfield and Woodbridge, and they were all great back-to-school nights. And I will say, back to the theme of a plan, I was very impressed at Reagan, the sixth grade science teacher, as she was presenting sixth grade science curriculum in the class, said, hey, by the way, we do a science fair, it's voluntary. We have a plan. If you want to look it up on the website, here's how we can help you do that and we have teachers who are willing to help you out with that. And she said, you know, if you're interested in a specialty program, a lot of the specialty programs look at kids who do science fairs. And so I think setting the bar high is a great idea in a great way and I was very impressed with the efforts out there at Reagan and I hope those kinds of efforts are, you know, shared across the county for best practices. Great education town hall this weekend in Woodbridge. Secretary Ottav Carney came in from Richmond to give a town hall. We had about, I think, 70 people at the peak of it there to talk about education issues and it was fantastic. It was a great forum for that. So thank you to the secretary and to the governor for sending him out here for that. Yesterday I had the opportunity to speak to the Literacy Volunteers of Prince William. They had their annual event. Another, again, with my theme of volunteers, great group of folks. They're out there helping folks learn how to read, adults, kids, really great work. If you're looking to volunteer, great organization. So I'd recommend the Literacy Volunteers of Prince William. Gil, on legislative agenda, as with anything, and I hope you all understand, you know, as being chair, my goal is that as we go through this, we have discussions, things aren't set in stone, things can be brought back. This is an evolving board with evolving issues and documents that can be brought back up and I share actually with you, you know, I heard from some legislators this week on some of our legislative priorities is being in conflicts with some of the things the folks here in town want as well. So anyways, these are documents that can constantly be worked on. So anyways, I want you all to have another great beginning of the school year. Thank you all for coming and have a great night. The meeting's adjourned.